To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'll call the meeting to order. Again, again, a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes from, uh, two six and two ten both.
Make that motion after looking both over, look agreeable, so I make a motion to approve of that.
First, and then-
Second.
Second, by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got a moment here for general public concerns. Paul, alphabetically, well, I'll start with you. Yeah, I just sit up here and-
Okay.
I'm just gonna turn this on so they can hear ya, sit in front of ya.
This is for videos so they can hear.
Okay.
You're on TV now.
Well, that's, you know, a lot of times wherever you go, you're on, turn on a camera.
You are just about.
Okay, for you, most of you know me, I'm Paul Anderson, so, uh, I have two things, two unrelated things actually, and one's really simple. Uh, one is that I notice a lot of times you talk about drainage districts and dredged ditches and laterals and stuff. I cannot get on the internet and find Humboldt County a map that shows that labels the dredged ditches and the laterals and stuff. So, I would think it would be nice if they could put on the county's website just a, a map of the county with the dredged ditches labeled and the laterals labeled. Uh, because I, you know, even the farm, our farm, I didn't realize till a year ago that I always thought our farm, the dredged ditch was the main, and then I found out later that it's the lateral. So, I mean, it was just, you know, just information, like, you know, it'd be nice to see that, you know, when you talk about drainage district number eight A, you know, that you could see where it is-
Yeah.
-in the county without having to come up here and, and look at the official map. So, that's just a comment and, uh-
Appreciate it.
Yeah. The second thing, which is unrelated, is the resolution you passed a couple weeks ago, number two thousand seventeen dash four, and it deals with the loan guarantee for the daycare center. And when I first heard that you were going to do this, I just assumed that this guarantee would be if the loan would go in default, that the county would step up with the city and Humboldt and the hospital, that they would, uh, guarantee this loan, and that, uh, you know, if it go in default, they pay it off, basically, like any cosigner would do. But then when I looked at the actual resolution and the attachment to it, then I realized that, to sum up, section three is that, uh, the daycare board is going to obtain an operating, uh, loan, and, uh, it's gonna be a monthly payment. And if it's ever short, the county would pay their main, uh, their percentage, which would be forty percent, of the remaining amount due. So, they would pay the shortfall every month of what is due, uh, which is a little different than what I assumed, which doesn't mean anything, you know, what I assumed is, you know, nothing. But, uh, but what could happen then is, say, when it gets going good and there's a short month, the county would have to come in and, and pay the, the shortfall of the loan for that month, and maybe the next month it's fine, they don't have to pay it. But, in the end then, what could, a scenario would be is that it goes great, the, the, you know, but the county still has to pay the shortfall month and not get reimbursed anything they pay. So, uh, maybe if you look at the year, they operate well in the black, but there's some months that for whatever reason, maybe startup cost or, uh, school starts and they lose students for, you know, uh, if not as many students and things like that. So, I just was wondering if, if I'm reading that right.
Question.
I think, Paul, the intention of that loan, which, like you say, is a startup loan, and all intentions are to have that completely paid off with the fundraising and with the operating income. It'd be a very slim possibility that the county would ever have to step in and help pay off that five hundred thousand dollars. And if we did, it would be that forty percent. And I think that would've been there monthly, so we wouldn't have to get the jabber at once if ever they'd do it the heck of a handbasket. If we thought it was going to hand, in handbasket, we'd have never entered into it. It's one of the best things this community's ever done. I think the county can step up and help it. I talked to other people this week at the meeting in Des Moines, that a lot of counties doing this. If you're gonna grow, you have to take a risk once in a while. And I think we did the right thing. I see your concern, but very minute possibility of that happening.
Well, I agree. Actually, for the counties, for taxpayers, if it is successful, it costs us less, so-
That's right, that's right. You have to stick your neck out once in a while to get something done. And I think we did, and I think we did the right thing, in my opinion. I'm just speaking for myself.
But is that how you thought it was gonna be guaranteed, is on a monthly basis and not being reimbursed if it does? Well, I'm getting at, say, if a year and they're in the black, but yet there was some shortage months, which, you know, the startup cost and, and things like that, that, uh, the county would have to pay to, to the shortfall, but in the overall, it would be successful. Uh, I just figured that mostly when you cosign a loan, that you're guaranteeing it against default, and, uh, that, uh, if the bank would call the note, and that the county would step up and pay their portion, uh, to reimburse it and stuff. But, uh, but when I read the resolution, it, you know, wasn't quite like that. But, it's still a guarantee, no matter, you know, it's just how you, how it's worded, how it is, how it is guaranteed, I guess.
Well, if you cosigned a note for your kid, we'd use that example, that note would be on a monthly, monthly basis, wouldn't it? So, if my kid defaulted on the note, I'd have to pay that month. I assume I'd have to help him-
Well, a lot of times-
-him or her.
Lot of times, if you can't make the payment, a lot of times the banks, they work with you, they'll, they'll put it on the back of the loan, which just means it extends it, you know, if you, like, can't make one month or two months and stuff. And it's usually in the wording of the loan, they'll just extend it. But, uh, but like I said, this way, the county might have to pay, even though they, in the long run, they would have enough money to pay the loan, but, uh, you know, so, it's just a, you know, I just thought it was different than what I thought the county was working at, so.
You think we made a mistake?
Well, I think it's a big word of difference. I think you should guarantee a loan and everything. I just think that it should be just the word, like, default in there, that if they're, if, uh, you know, if it falls apart completely, that the county would pay, pick it up. But, uh, I'm not saying, you know, like I said, it's, it's still a guarantee, it's just how it is guaranteed. That'd be safer for the, the taxpayers that, you know, I hate to, would have to pay something that because they were short a month, that, uh, you know, in the, overall, they would be able to pay it, but just because of one month that I, you know-
Yeah, I think part of this was dealing with, we have no history as far as the daycare. And they didn't have any structure, didn't have anything. In order to go to the bank and borrow money, he has certain guidelines, he has a policy, he had to have a document. And that document is more of a banker's purpose than it was for anything else. He'd be able to loan some money on, no structure, no nothing.
Yeah.
Had no credit.
Yeah.
Once we had the building up, we'd borrow, buy money on your own. But, that was a document for the banker to secure his bank examiner, so they knew they had to secure a loan. I'm sure you know-
So, they had the banking, or the backing of the county, the city and the hospital-
Right, the county. The only reason it was written out there.
And the school.
And, and we had our county attorney look at it. So, uh, we're, um, appreciative of your concerns.
Okay.
But, uh, the board on that, the people that are on that board, I have a lot of faith in them people, I've dealt with them in different projects and stuff. But, uh, I'm glad to hear your concerns and-
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up.
We can have John re-review the wording on that and see if that-
I don't think we need to, myself.
I'd like to say, yeah, appreciate your concern, yeah, without running it past an attorney again, but it does appear that way, and I can understand your concern seeing that. I think you're-
I'm sure it's wording that the bank needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, and Paul's, to his, you know, concern, yes, you could pay some money, even though you, they don't technically, in the long run, default on the loan. You know, the county could still be on the hook for several payments, depending upon, you know, what the bank did. So, I think it's a legitimate, you know, concern, and I, I appreciate the fact that he caught that. And it, you know, we all hope it doesn't happen, but obviously, it, it could. And, you know, the county would be, would be putting up some money, 'cause it is stated as monthly payments, once they get going on this loan repayment. So, it's not unfounded. Um, let's, uh, you know, the whole thing was to say, yeah, let's hope it never happens, but if it does, I think he's correct, and we obviously can double check legally, that, you know, yes, I would say the county could end up spending some money, even though in the entirety, it doesn't go south or go wrong. And like I said, obviously, good faith, we'll hope it doesn't happen. So, I, I think it's a legitimate catch and a concern there for Paul. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul.
And we'll check with Trish, or however we can-
I, that sounds like a good idea, Paul, yeah, it really does, 'cause we, we all carry, we all have one of these maps, binders with all the stuff in it. It'd be nice to have that available to everybody.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, would you like to come up for it?
Just introduce yourself and- Uh, my name's Matt Sinmiller. Uh, just last year, recently bought a property. A couple of you are already aware of, uh, I guess, excess road, for lack of a better term, is sits on the Humboldt-Webster County line. Um, we're having some difficulties with, uh, getting that road maintained. Um, when I bought the property, I was assured by the real estate agent and previous owners that it was maintained by Humboldt County before. Since we moved in, very little has been done to it. Uh, it's springtime now, it's getting warmer, everything's starting to melt, it's, it's kind of a sloppy mess. Um, I was informed before that it wasn't a county road. Um, when I started talking to other people, as in the post office, says it has to be a publicly maintained road for their laws, according where the, their service goes. Uh, talked to the school, the school says the same thing. Um, their buses can't go on private lanes, so it must be a publicly maintained road. Um, historically, it has been maintained in the past. Our neighbor says in the past ten years, previous owners, they had kids, and they said, yeah, comes down and does Kentucky Avenue, it would do that little four or five hundred foot lane there. It is labeled Two Hundred and Eighty is Street. Um, now, when I did look, check on some county maps, um, on the one county map I was looking at, it is not on that particular county map. Can't quite look on that one there.
Yeah.
Three miles to the west of us was another stretch of Two Hundred and Eighty, apparently Two Hundred and Eighty's went all the way across, and sections of it has been vacated. I went and looked at that one that's off of Hawaii Avenue, runs west of Hawaii Avenue, which is shown on the county map, but there is no road there at all. It's a field access. I did take, uh, a satellite view of it from Google Earth, and I took some pictures of it. Um, when ours is, you can definitely tell it was a maintained road at one time. So, based upon that, I'm kind of, you know, and I'm not real sure of the jurisdiction, if it falls under Humboldt County or Webster County. Historically, it's been, from what I understand, it has been Humboldt County in the past year. It's just the service on that has stopped. Um, our neighbor's that is north, straight north of C forty-nine, has a similar issue. And I went and talked with him the other night. He says in about the past year or so, service maintaining his road, and his post office box is up near his house too, has stopped as well. Um, he just says, you know, this past winter, it's been relatively mild, so I haven't been too concerned about him. Uh, but, uh, ours is, doesn't have a lot of gravel on it, and there's a couple places where it dr- does drift. And that's, I guess, my main concern is, not so much who maintains it, is, it's been proven where it has been maintained in the past, and the past year it just stopped for, for no reasonable reason. And that's why I was, why I'm coming here.
Matt talked to me a couple times, I think I mentioned to the board, and I went out to see Paul, and I think I referred back to you, Matt, that Paul was checking with Matty Will, the county engineer and-
I've talked to him as well.
So, you're way ahead of me there, then?
Okay. And he did say that, uh, there is several roads that he mentioned, that there's agreements, like Humboldt County will take care of these roads just because of ease of access or location, and then Webster County will take care of others. He didn't have that particular, my particular road there at that time. Um, I guess the biggest thing that I, kind of discrepancy that I saw was, on the county map, our little road isn't there, but off of Hawaii Avenue, there is a section of road that is labeled that is, it's very obviously, it's not, not a road. It's, it's a field access. Um, I guess, back in the mind, I was just thinking that possibly whoever was drawing up these maps, if they misplaced it just by mistake or-
So, right now, the snowball turns around to driveway, at the curve there, is that what happens?
What's that? I'm sorry?
Come the end of, when you butt into, to Webster County Road.
Yeah.
They turn around there and go back, but I'm like-
Well, they, uh, there's a, a photo there. Um, we're-
Going down to Kentucky?
Yep, down Kentucky. That's the south end of Kentucky where the county line is. Um, historically, in fact, when I was looking at this property last February, that, that road is graded, that east-west section. Um, right here. Uh, there is, there is no place to turn around here. Uh, down here, on the end here, there is kind of a, a widened area where the school bus does kind of circle around and back around and make a-
Right there, bring mailbox?
Yeah, yeah. And we asked about that, and previous owners said, well, it's always been there. It helps for the school bus to get turned around. It's helped. There's no real significant ditch there, but it just kind of helps them turn around easily, safely. Like I said, this part on a lot of county maps isn't, isn't there. Over here, three miles, there's a section that is not there, that is labeled on the county maps. And I know when the arguments was made, that, well, if it's not on the county map, we don't maintain it. Um, well, that section on Hawaii Avenue is on the county map, and it's absolutely not maintained. It's grass growing up. And that's, I guess, my concern for the guys.
Okay, well, thanks, Matt, for coming in here and, uh, explaining the situation to us, and we'll have our conversation with Paul here today, and come, we'll come to a remedy.
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of the story is Randy's looking in to see if he's got any records at all of any right-of-way on, on the Webster County side, because there is none in Humboldt.
Okay.
Uh, the road on the three miles west, the Humboldt side was vacated, the Webster County side wasn't. Us, it shows up as a road on a map.
Mm-huh. All right. Okay. Let me get back to my agenda here. All right, Paul, do you wanna come up? And we'll take care of business, and we'll discuss this matter after that.
Well, this matters, uh, pending whatever we find out on Webster County at this point.
Okay.
And, uh, the only thing additional in Humboldt County is that, oof, the only thing additional in Humboldt County is the property. In Humboldt County, the forty acres that was parceled out, uh, in nineteen seventy-four, had to grant one brother an easement along the South Forty Line, a twenty-foot wide easement to get to the west half, because there isn't a public way there. So, the plot thickens. This morning's business is, uh, three, uh, floor plans inspected and set letting date for the fall and replacement structures. We have three, three of those structures, uh, I believe they're all, uh, look and smell like bridges, uh, but they're short, so they're technically not bridges. Uh, one is LC one seven three three oh four, it's a box cover on P sixty-six between sections thirty-two and thirty-three of Norway Township. Uh, the second one is LC one eighty-one oh two oh, uh, which is a box cover on two thirtieth between sections three and ten of Beaver Township. And the final one is LC twenty-eight oh six sixty, a box cover on one sixtieth between Michigan and K Road. Um, in terms of where they're located, the first one is on the highway on P sixty-six south of Thor, it's roughly a half mile off the county line. Second one is, uh, roughly three miles east of, uh, where we're sitting, on two thirtieth street, uh, out on a gravel road, east-west gravel road, uh, east of town. And, uh, the third one is up by Robert Hawks, south of Livermore.
Where's Robert Hawk?
Um, Arnold. How about Arnold, I-
I don't know any of the names.
Oh, Arnold would be a problem for you with the-
Going north of County K?
Okay.
Just before you go down the dip over-
A mile, a mile north of, uh, B one sixtieth, one seventieth is our white topping that runs from Hardy to, it's a mile north of that, and then west, uh-
Three quarters of a mile.
Now, I know where you are.
Arnold is just west of that, ten tops, a little bit, yes.
Arnold, it used to be a town.
Is that right?
A long time ago.
That might make it a little tough on your car on Arnold Island.
Not quite, there was still something there.
Um, all three structures were proposing to bid, uh, at one, uh, point, or at one time, at, uh, ten o'clock on February twenty-eighth, here in the boardroom, uh, with all three of them tied. In other words, this will be three structures, uh, uh, three plans and one, one contract. The, uh, proposal is, uh, fifteen thousand dollar proposal guarantee. A late start on the one seven three, three oh four is, uh, nine five, uh, the one eighty-one oh two oh is nine eighteen, and then the twenty-eight oh six sixty is ten two. So, we start with the latest one September fifth, and, and roll on back with fifteen, fifteen, and ten working days. Uh, the good news is, one of these projects was hit with the peak of Shire. As of this morning, it's not. So, uh, that was very fortunate to get that by us at this point.
Want to, want the bid date, you're gonna let us-
February twenty-
I did email them out, um-
Yep.
Yeah.
But I have full-size copies. We have three sets of each, one of the sets of plans. And I need some emails from a couple of you, apparently, because I don't have the right ones.
Um, we do have a, let's see, Monday's full, tw- the twenty-eighth is wide open, so, anytime.
Good, we were hopeful. Uh, we checked with what we could check before this morning to see that that worked. Uh, Tuesday is a good time, uh-
Ten o'clock or eleven or?
Uh, I haven't seen it on here, what is it? Um, ten AM?
Ten AM.
Twenty-eight.
Uh, if there is a issue with anyone, we just need three board members here for that.
I'll be gone.
You'll be gone, okay. Oh, I plan on being here.
I plan on.
Okay, it's like eleven o'clock.
Good, and the point is, is, uh, we may try to fast-track. Um, if we have a clean letting, we may review numbers, install a little bit, and may go right to award in the same meeting, if we have a quorum, because there's-
That'd be fine.
There's other issues with, uh, national, uh, regional permits, that if it's not under contract by a certain time, you get to get a different regional permit.
Are you looking for a few separate bids there, or a combination bid?
Well, y'all, they'll probably break it down, won't they, gonna just give them one last-
Well, they'll break it down and give us broker, but we're tying the projects. In other words, you can't just bid one project. If you bid one project, it would be deemed incomplete.
Yeah.
We're bidding all three of them one month, so.
Contract or get them all?
One contract, one contract.
So, is the one south of Thor, is that going under the, uh, hardened surface road, or is that-
Yes.
Well, it's the second one. It's not the first one.
That's what I wondered.
It's third on by south of the Eagle Black Top.
Yeah, it's got guardrails on it.
Oh, all right.
That's a nineteen-foot long structure, and that will be now anybody-
All right.
That would be nice to get that.
The narrow, yes. Good.
Okay.
The other one is what we programmed, uh, uh, the one south of Thor, it's in the, uh, eighteen program.
All right.
I know we approved this bet, so you set bid letting in for February twenty-eighth at ten o'clock.
Have a first, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Same by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, bid letting date is set.
I do need signature from the auditor on this thing before I can publish it. So, I have all of that in one pile, I reckon. Uh, beyond that, uh, I promised the board members some numbers for rocks. Uh, all of the, uh, last week's rock hauling activities, uh, were delivered to Sioux this morning. We're forty tons short of thirty-nine hundred tons to Livermore last week. I will email you the finals, uh, as to, uh, costs and time and, and, uh-
Dollars per ton, probably.
Yeah. Uh, next, we're going to Bode at thirty-two hundred and fifty ton to Bode. Uh, that's as hard a surface as we have at this point. Uh, this week, uh, appears to be the end of March weather or later, and, uh, it might get soft. Makes you wonder if you shouldn't be hauling on the road, but that's a little premature.
Yeah.
Might bait you in. Trees, we worked on trees, uh, uh, last week. I think they're still trying to clean up some of them, uh, this morning down on Kansas Avenue. Uh, we opened that up considerably, and, uh, trying to get it all burnt before it gets too soft to do anything down there, too.
I told you, road arrived with Paul down there one Thursday or Friday. Anyway, it really looks like different flakes.
Did they prune her back pretty good?
Pretty vacant, right?
She got a haircut. Remember what it was going through the Foster Bridge when we opened that up here a few years ago? It's a lot.
Yeah.
It really looks crooked now.
The road is really crooked, but that new slice and dicer goes pretty high, too.
Yeah, how's that working now, after getting, uh, used to using it?
Yeah, it's, it's hard on blades, and, and we still have the original set of blades and, uh, and it's rugged and it's crude. But it, uh, I see the railroad must've had something similar up in Elgonner, 'cause everything is scarred the same way on either side of the track, right in through town. But we've been, we started with it over west of, well, we started with it on the trail eastward, but we went out west of Berkmore, and, uh, have been working in the vicinity of the shop here, and, uh, I don't know where it went today.
Okay. All right, now, with the Matt's issue here, this is something that isn't on the agenda. We can talk about it, we can't make a decision.
Well, and all's we're trying to do is gather facts. So, we have, uh, and the board's been seeing some of these stubs, subroads that are roads, that aren't roads.
Mm-huh.
His is not on any maps, he's right. Um, and it's not been graded. Uh, the, the, he at this point, the access, his neighbors had to provide themselves access. So, there is no road there. At some point, if it's a road, we'll need right-of-way. We don't have any. And, and yep, we've maintained it. We've maintained a lot of these things over the years. One of them, north of Bode, used to go right up to the garage and turn around, until we started cutting too much sod, and that became an issue. Another one used to be a board member, that we ran right up to the house, but there was no access all the way up to that either.
Well, Paul, I'm out there and look, and I need to be contrary here, but I'm just wondering, four hundred feet, would it be easier on your equipment to go up there and turn around rather than turn, turn around on that curve?
Well, that's what's been happening.
Maybe you get access from that farm, it'll allow you to drive there to, I mean, I'm just looking what's good for your equipment. I think you'd get stuck there on that curve, you could cut up these mailboxes.
And, and what we've done before in the past is we've built driveways- And, and what we've done before in the past is we've built driveways or whatever to turn around prior to. But this one, uh, has been done that we've maintained right around the corner and turned. And this, uh, I believe Matt called last June. I, I don't have my notes with me, and this is when the process started, when we researched our end of it and did some researching. Uh, Webster County did some research on it and, and came up empty-handed. Everybody went back. We went through the transfer books Friday when we found that the Humboldt County side had an easement, but it was an easement because there was twenty acres landlocked out of the forty. When the two brothers split, one got the west of the forty, and they had to grant a twenty-foot easement to get back to the farm. So actually, there's an easement on the county line for the farmer, and that's it. That's all we found legally at this point, and if it was to become a road, then there needs to be some right-ofway.
Where, Matt, where's your nine-one-one sign at?
It's, uh, right on that, well, I don't know if this will help or not. My property, there's that little section.
Yeah, I'm pretty aware of that.
Um, yeah, it's showing it's active roadway. The nine-one-one sign is right here on this corner.
It's out there on the corner.
True.
Okay.
Yeah, but it is, that's his nine-one-one side. We also have a curb sign there. But we got a marked dead end, which is proper, appropriate, but we have a curb sign coming down to him. That's the only thing that would be, show us that it, it looks like a road. We marked it, but it, then again, like you said, there's other pieces that are out there that we still have signed. A few years ago, uh, we had a road that we discovered that we vacated twenty-some years ago, and it still has the dead end sign on it. We've never removed the sign. We probably should.
Uh, you know, whether it becomes legal or not legal or road or not road, it would be ridiculous for Webster County to plow that.
Well, neither one of us has it in our agreement. And, and what, what, it came up last summer was he wanted rock on the county road. Well, it's not a county road, and, and we researched it to find that out. And did we blade it? Yeah, we bladed it, but it's, we turned around in the corner because it's a white spot in the road on, on to the west of the T. Originally, this was a farmstead, and, and, uh, one ownership of the whole works when they parceled the farmstead out in nineteen ninety-six is when this should've jumped to the surface.
Is this something that really needs to be made such a big deal of? I mean, obviously, I can see possibly conversing with Webster County for possible rock cost.
The only thing that would be nice, Eric, is to have something in writing, so when he transfers it someday...
Absolutely.
Then there is something recorded that something happens, you know?
As far as the...
Well, see, on, on that diagram, that, how that is, and, and that was part of the abstract research, to me, you know, that's like a legal document, you know, showing active roadway.
Yeah.
And I was told that homes have to have a public access available.
And yours must not, or the farmer on the north side wouldn't have had to do it in, uh, what, in the seventies, seventy-six? I don't have my paperwork with me.
Yeah, well, I mean, do we need, what, what I'd like to see?
We need to maintain road, that we have responsibilities to maintain.
Right, but we can't, you know, it's not like Matt's making up where he lives and that he doesn't live out there, and, and there is a access, obviously. And I know it is a county line deal, and it's, we're lacking maybe some records, you know, not everything was kept track of real well back in the day.
Or maybe a solution to this, if we look at it as a Level B road, and we maintain that at our discretion, and our discretion is to plow this note to the mailbox.
Fair.
So, look, think about that, Paul. You, uh, we'll visit with you, and we'll, we'll...
And we'll see. Maybe something will crop up more solid, but at this point...
Maybe Webster's gonna step up and say, hey, that means that's our, clearly our county. Maybe they'd be interested in supplying some of that rock if they ever had to.
Well, I know, it's, it's... Our grading stopped at the end, uh, and, and, and it's never been graded. It's the lane, you know, and it's a, what we've done has not been without reason. We've bladed the road to the corner and bladed it back.
Just because it's convenient to do it that way.
It's convenient to do it that way. When it comes to some upgrades, we have no rights, responsibility, or otherwise, to in, improve the road and overgrade the road, so there's a ditch on it, which there is none.
Yeah. Something like your compromise, let them pave with the rock, and you just go up there and turn around and stuff off. Everybody'd be happy. With the legal and legal, not...
This is not a huge expenditure either way, and obviously, yeah, it's Webster County, they'd be agreeable as far as spending a huge amount of money and upgrading it to a...
I see Rick's concerned, what, get something right, he puts...
Right. It's a benefit to the landowner to have something recorded so that when he does go to sell the property, you know, you don't have this issue crop up again.
Yeah. Or the next landowner does it, too, is for being on his property.
We got, we got liability there, too, for the five hundred, four hundred and ninety feet. Uh, we need something in writing, I feel, that, you know, gives us permission to go down there and turn around and come back.
Yeah, we've done on some of these other complete ones that aren't finished yet, they're incomplete, the documentation, but they've been stragglers from years and years, um, is we've had quick claim deeds from the people, the roadway, to, to plot the road back, so it does, does go through the courthouse, it'll show up, it will become non-taxable. Right now, at this point, everything's taxed at farmland values, uh, and, and that's what we've done to try to clean up some of these. Yep, there's, I don't...
Because they can't, he can't get the deed to it because then they lose his access to that field, so, and that almost has to be a road.
But the, the property that owns all the way around his acreage is, is owned to the corner, so the Webster County side's an easier side to get there than the Humboldt County side. Well, maybe.
Well, I'll look into it and come up, come with some simple solution.
Well, and we wanted to get to all of the, I wanted to have, uh, Mr. Will exhaust Webster Counties to make sure that they didn't find something in a transfer, in the transfer books, because, uh, nobody's got documented roads. The only thing we have is a survey that says, uh, roadway in question. Roadway, didn't call it right-ofway, called a roadway.
Can this get to be a documented road or a lane or whatever? Yes, and we do have authority to maintain it. Does that mean we have to dig out the, the side roads, too?
Doesn't mean we have to. That's why we can.
Yeah, let's not, let's not blow this out of proportion for what it is. It's, it's not, I know there's some legality, it's county line, Webster County, that, what was it, wasn't recorded, things like this happen, but let's, you know, keep it relatively simple.
Keep it as simple as we can and least as expensive and...
Yes, precisely, it's not...
But we've had a lot of requests over the years where people want us to rock their private driveways and that.
Well, this isn't private driveway. Matt's not asking, he's not asking to go up to his house. So I think it's a fair request, let's keep it fairly simple.
If we talk to his kids, they probably don't like it, flogs, for, then the bus can't get there and run to school.
Our driveway's a thousand feet long, so he complains about that anyway. He's not happy about that in the beginning.
We'll find out more.
Yeah.
We'll get an answer.
Yeah, well, thank you. Get it as quick and simple.
Well, again, we need some, yeah.
We need something in writing that we can record and...
And, and somebody's gotta grant, somebody needs one, so it amounts to...
Yeah, we have to do that, what that's for.
And, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to talk to Paul about that, Douglas?
No. Is that out there?
I don't know if Paul even saw that one.
What's that?
That letter in here?
Oh.
Very good.
Um, it was left, left this weekend.
Thank you, thank you. I don't, I keep it wrapped there, thank you very much.
Okay.
Don't wake up all in one place.
Are you getting your, is your email all right? I don't have C number of cell phones for either one of you guys either, but someday I'll get them. I do have...
I should get a copy of your post.
Yeah, Paul, I, I've read through it, I can bank.
Okay, you'll give the north.
Yeah.
You got it, that's all right, Paul.
Well, I'll get that later. Do you see that letter? Do you want yours on the internet?
Paul, did you see that letter?
Very good, but wait till...
I remember you got one of those.
Yes, I did, I talked to her Friday.
You got, you got the same thing.
Okay, so you've seen this letter.
I talked to her Friday. I got one through the great sign.
All righty. Well, thanks.
And no, the standard of care hasn't changed. Yes, it, uh, was, uh, plowed, uh, was impassable for vehicle on Sunday morning, and we plowed it Sunday afternoon, pulled plows out to, to go over those, these are best roads out along the river.
Yeah, I'll get this back to you, Matt.
As far as calling, you know, protocol and call you, the nation told them to call the county shed, and they didn't actually call the county shed, did they?
You were down there interviewing?
Oh, as far as an emergency phone call? They followed the phone tree, and they called my home phone, it was after hours at five-thirty, uh, and they talked to my wife. My wife said, he's in the office, try the office.
And they didn't call the office?
Uh, they called my cellphone.
Okay, okay.
Which was on silent because I was in an interview. Ben was in the next office with his cellphone, and then they went to Jeff George, followed down the tree, and, and, uh, and then went to whoever they could reach. Uh, and following protocol, this is the first time in sixteen years they had to go past two phone calls, and, and it was just the quirk of all of us in the same spot with the, with the phones off. I mean, if I would've seen Helen C come through on caller ID, I would've known, uh...
Yeah, I'm sure he would've definitely taken that.
But as, uh, we're sitting with a candidate for an interview, and, and I expect phones to be up, I don't want anybody talking on their cell phone during the interview, never even dreamt of it. Normally, even on weekends, if I'm gone or Ben's gone or somebody's gone, we let them know so that they don't waste that phone call looking for me.
Long as you're true to communicate, that's great.
But wouldn't the, wouldn't the, had it, Jeff, wouldn't he have the ability to say, I can bring the sand down?
Yeah, he could, but the problem with that scenario is, uh, if, if they don't get Jeff, and then the next thing, we got three guys out, and, and in where it's jurisdictional, where we do have different spots in the county and who is the appropriate people to call, what's the appropriate piece of equipment, what's the appropriate response, and, and sometimes Jeff would, would be fine for that, uh, but at some point, when you get down, it's not that they couldn't do it, it's should they be making those kind of calls, it's who should go out and, and what, what piece of equipment, what manpower do we need? Generally, uh, it starts with me and then it goes down the list, and generally, it's me or Ben that gets the first two calls, then Foreman, and then they call me back, so everybody's on the same team, so we don't have people showing up from several directions, uh, to deal with.
Same event.
A tree down, a branch down, whatever the call is.
Or some insignificant thing at two o'clock in the morning.
Sometimes they're significant, once we get out there, we say, oh my, and we're calling and getting all, everybody, all hands on deck. I mean, we've had that on several occasions with flooding, trying to get roads, or worse trees down with storms. We got multiple trees, multiple locations. We know, for instance, if the end loader's over pushing and, uh, loading up, uh, rock in Thor, Iowa, and we have that piece of equipment as close as, those kind of things are coming to play when we're in the middle of the night trying to figure out what we need to restore.
Do you think one of our problems, years ago, I grew up on a farm, and, you know, as a county, you get around, we take the tractor and go out and clean, but we don't have many farmers out there anymore. We have a lot of people living on acreage that want to get to work, and that's what's causing a lot of our concerns and gripes. Forty years ago, we didn't have, we didn't worry about it. I need to get to county, take the tractor and fly out through there.
And, and we still have different versions of that, for instance, the one on, uh, the extension of C forty-nine south of town, he's a trucker, and he pulled in right when we did, and he's got the loader there, and he said, I'll take care of this. We helped him initially get it off the road, then he finished it, but he wasn't there. Forty years ago, he would've been there.
That's the difference from today and what it was years ago. We get more and more concerns and have to change the map sometimes.
I mean, that's what we used to do with the milk truck, we always plowed the road.
Who?
The milk truck, years ago.
I've never seen the school bus plow, plow and plow.
They'll just get that a fair way.
Go off in the other one.
Yeah.
I can see a school bus put the chains on, plowing down, they don't do that anymore.
Oh, the milk truck, can't get the, the, during...
We hope not the end of the week, and hopefully, I'm, uh, hopefully, we don't have a lot of frost. I'm not sure how deep it, I haven't talked to anybody, but, uh, if we get forties and fifties the end of the week in, in, uh, middle of February, hopefully, don't have too many hauling a hundred thousand bushels of corn this week, so...
Yeah, I don't think we have much frost. All righty.
Very good.
We'll move along. Okay, down here on the bottom, we got to appoint Deb Olmert to the eminent domain board. It's nice to have someone step up, and it sounds like they're doing, gonna do a rotation between realtors.
That's the way, uh, Kevin Scott, when I visited with him, he said they were gonna try to set it up to rotate from one firm to the next, and they would keep Peggy and all of us in the loop to know.
I don't know why the whole, all the realtors agree with Kevin, though.
Well, I don't know either. I told him, uh, if he wanted to coordinate it, then we would surely be appreciative of it, and whether the realtors don't want to do it, or they do want to do it, right now, we got one to cover it.
Be ready for work.
We still have two other openings.
We got one more, one more opening.
Well, um, Kevin, the way I understood, uh, his wife is on that, but she's the, she holds the license, so which one do we need?
Um, they're all real estate salespersons or brokers.
Well, the way I understand it, so that Kevin was going to, don't say this, but politely twist, um, his wife's arm to see if he could get her to...
Apply.
Apply or to put her name in, and I'll call him back, and hopefully, we'll get the second.
Okay. One or two, where should it get to?
Still two.
Sure, two.
Sure, two.
And Kevin's already on the list, so we get...
Deb agrees and appoint her, then that would leave one opening?
No, that's still two, we have three.
Two, two, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Do we need a motion to appoint Deb?
Yeah, we need a motion to appoint...
Oh, you make the motion to appoint Deb Olmert to the eminent domain board.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Used to be a lot easier to communicate with the realtors when we had their local organization, now it's all big conglomerate with Ames and Western City, and they don't even see each other anymore. It's hard to do what Kevin wants to get done, I hope he can.
Well, I don't know, I'm not in the real estate. I'm in the real world, have a real job.
We, we, we thank you a lot. We, it's good on this part, we get boiled, it really is.
Okay. All right, now let's go down to approve claims.
I had, I looked through it, and if I have the correct number, uh, one forty-two, nine six seven point one three, and drainage is twenty thousand, three ninety-five oh three.
Okay.
Twenty thousand, three ninety-five.
I had written down twenty-nine, but she probably...
Did I?
I got twenty thousand, three ninety-five.
Wrote the wrong number down.
See?
Yeah.
Carl, you always lead me astray.
I would've spent nine thousand dollars more. And what was the first one, Bruce?
One forty-two, nine six seven point one three. There's a handwritten page in the backside.
There you go.
Yep.
What does the first number was?
One, one four two.
One forty-two, nine six seven point one three and twenty, three nine five point oh three.
Okay, well, first motion. Can I have a second? Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let's go around with our committee reports.
Um, Monday, the sixth, I was at the Farm Bureau meeting with the rest of us. Interesting evening. We, we served a meal and listened to some questions that they had. Peggy did an awesome job giving them their numbers for, uh, proposals for this next year. So they were, they didn't boo us or anything like that, so hopefully they'll be good with that. Tuesday night, the seventh, um, we were up at the, in the conference room with the jury or the, uh, what would've been the auditor? Not the auditor.
Assessor.
Assessor, excuse me.
Conference board.
Conference board, yep. Um, I guess Wednesday's meeting was, uh, I had it wrote down too, Rick. Then on Thursday and Friday, Rick and I went down to the insurance meeting down in Des Moines. I have some, I didn't run everything off like, like you did, Carl, but the, uh, for me, I was like swimming because when you go into a thing and you have, uh, you haven't been there for,
Ever.
Ever, and all of a sudden they're throwing figures out and this and that and, and talking and, and, uh, it's kinda like you just went into a class that don't have a clue what they're talking about. But, uh, the first lady, uh, gave her a, uh, overview of, um, I almost kinda felt like she was mad about the current administration because she kept referring to the Republicans as, "Don't know what they're gonna do. Gonna tear the heart out of Obamacare. Don't know where we're gonna go. Don't know how it's gonna turn out. Don't know, don't know, don't know." But yet, that's what we have. So, you know, they're, they, uh, they gave us this presentation and said if, if things, uh, in a few weeks, in a few months, when they, the Trump administration brings their proposals out, hopefully we'll all come together and she didn't feel that they're just gonna cut it down and start over. They're gonna have to make some changes to it and hopefully, uh.
It sounded like it's gonna take at least a year.
Yeah.
Year, maybe a half.
So, that was the first part. The second, uh, one was on, uh, the, uh, employee benefit. They sure would like to, and also Chris was down there for the first day. The, uh, employee benefit system, um, they send and spend thousands of dollars on our paper trail. That, you know, if you have things, they mail it to you. Well, their big push this year is they wanna go green and they wanna be able to set it up so that, you know, you can get on their website. It was kind of ironic because the lady sat there for the longest time and she was trying to get logged on and, "I can't do that. It won't let me log in."
They, they themselves can get on their own website.
She's like, "Well, try another password. Try my password. Try this, try that." While we're sitting there like, "Oh, okay, yeah." And she's telling us how easy it is.
Probably not.
So then all of a sudden she says, "Oh, just a minute." So she goes over to the website for the hotel. Well, she forgot to hook up to their wifi, so she was just basically trying to steal it from down the street or whatever. So she, once she got logged in, then she flew right in and, and was able to take us along and, and, uh, show us how, you know, um, the first phone call you'd have to make was to their, like an IT person.
And you have to get, you have to get a code which they sent to every employee last April, which I'm sure I threw in the garbage.
Yeah, like that, the guy's behind us.
Probably eighty, ninety percent of employees in there.
That's what he said. The guy sitting behind us, "Well, it would've been nice in April if they would've sent a letter saying, "This is a information that's gonna come when we wanna go paperless." But for the most part, you'll have to call in, do a password, get, get it okayed and then redo it and then be able to.
But the problem with this system is visiting with some of the people down here that actually do the work like Chris would, they don't like it because they're seeing everybody's business and they really don't wanna know everybody's business.
And for HIPAA purposes, we shouldn't.
Yeah, so.
I don't know how they're gonna cover that.
Well, it's, I think they're still doing some modifications and tweaks and.
I mean, I got the general, general census from the people down here that are gonna be using this. They don't like it.
Did anybody bring them down?
The online version, yes.
There's still some people that don't have internet access.
And there's a lot of people that don't have internet access.
When someone asks that, they'll turn around and it's like, "Are you serious?" But we are in all Des Moines. You know, we are in all, there's people that, you know, in smaller towns and, and whatnot that don't have computers. My mom was eighty-seven years, eighty-three years old and she never had a computer, so whenever, you know, there's a lot of people that don't, but.
And, or if they do, they don't even like to use them. You know, 'cause they don't trust the security of the computer systems.
So anyway, they're still working on some of those there. I, I don't think that it's foolproof yet, but I think that, um, in time, it'll be, hopefully be able to save them some money because of the fact that, you know, when you see your EBS envelope come in and, I don't, I, I have to be honest. I don't think I've looked at too many of them other than gone inside them once in a while, so. And then I think the, um, basically we were running far enough ahead on Thursday, um, we were like an hour and a half done and early. So we had to kinda twiddle our thumbs because we, they didn't have a meal prepared. So, um, we just kinda talked and the overall consensus was we could've condensed this all down and made, probably made it into one day. As opposed to spending, you know, we didn't start till two in the afternoon and then we're done an hour and a half early. And then the next morning, we started at, uh, what, eight, nine o'clock?
Yeah, that breakfast at eight o'clock and nine o'clock, the meeting starting, we were done by eleven thirty. So we had two and a half hours one day and about two and a half hours the other day.
Would've been nice. That get brought up? Was anyone that would beg?
Well, she, the gal that, they're gonna come and, and speak with us personally and we'll, we'll bring it up at that time.
I, well, I wasn't there, but I, I feel for you.
I wondered why they did it that way.
And I think, you know, they probably do it for the people who have to travel. Some of them are going three and a half hours to come to us.
Well, we ate dinner that night with people from Kia Kuk.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, they're clear down in the corner.
Very corner.
So, and the other side is you don't know how many people are gonna have question after question, you know?
Sometimes it can be more lengthy, right?
But the other thing Rick and I talked about, and I don't wanna put him on the spot, but, you know, um, we had three people down there with Chris was there the first day, then Rick and I for both days. And I just kinda related it like going to the dentist, you know? Something you gotta do, but you really don't look forward to it.
Yeah.
And Rick said, "Well, you know, um, he feels that maybe it'd be best, the same person served on it." We just, I guess we just rotate.
Just went every year because I was like Bruce last year. I sat in the, what I call the audience while Terry goes up on the board. And your, my head was just swimming. You couldn't keep up with all the figures and follow along and you've got a stack of papers like that you're thumbing through trying to keep up with what they're telling you. And I just thought it was ridiculous for us to spend that kinda money to send two people for it. I just think we should have one permanent member do it. Cause we needed someone to sit on the board down there.
Okay, I call that same thing. I went down as a, sat around the outside and the next year I went, we always had to preach to you, the president goes and the next up becomes the president goes. First year you're swimming in water, the next year you have, we know what's going on. I think if I'd gone back a third year, I might not, I might've learned what was going on, but it was, it wasn't my turn next time.
Yeah, you're done.
I think you got a good idea.
Well, the other thing was when they brought the people from Blue Cross and Blue Shield up, I almost felt sorry for them. And then I remembered they sell insurance, so I really didn't feel that way after listening. But the people on the, in our board are, they were really kind of almost mad about the fact that they thought some of the figures in there, um, it was like, well, we're getting charged for things that we're really not sure that is in there.
What they were doing, they're gonna give us a, I'm just gonna use a number here. Say they're gonna give us a ten percent increase. They're applying that ten percent increase to fees that are supposed to be standard fees from year to year to year. So they had already threw their fees into the pot and then threw the increase on it at ten percent. So actually you're theoretically getting a twelve percent increase on your actual insurance costs. They made it look like it was less, but it wasn't.
That new rate, they didn't do that.
I know, they didn't. They're just trying to make it look better than what it actually is.
Well, once the blood was in the water, everybody was pretty much swimming the same direction and they were, they kept beating that same question and the lady that was doing the presentation. Then there was a guy that was, I think, in charge of that. Finally they got to him and to got to the point where, um, we'll check into that, but we're not sure that, well, we'll just check into it.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think that we may have, they may have stumbled into something, but my, my question to them was is, you know, we don't ever, like Algona just joined, so is there a number, do they place their number? Because of the fact that you don't know they're a new group coming in, um, you know, when you buy insurance, they, they kind of,
They do.
They pray that you, you know, you're healthy and, and whatever. Well, our, our group is pretty, been pretty good. Our numbers are.
Yeah, we lost a few.
Right.
But now we've kinda replaced them with, and that wasn't, I think, two or three more groups.
Right.
And what they, uh, what they do, the insurance guys, they kinda raise it higher, higher than what it should be because they don't know what they're getting. Put it that way.
Yeah. So when Algona joins, they, and I'm just using Algona because that was the name that they were, that threw out there that, you know, they don't really know what they got when they got Algona. But, you know, as we spread them out and the longer we go, the better the numbers will come back.
The better, the better it'll go back down.
It does. And that was, that was the question. The gal who was bashing the Republican says, "Oh, have you ever seen your insurance policy goes down?" And, and our agent from, that does, runs our trust, she says, "Yeah, they did back before the Affordable Care Act."
Yes.
She said they would go up, down a little bit.
That's probably the best unit we could ever be in.
It is. It's excellent.
No matter what rate they're having, it's better be anywhere else. And I'm just assuming to sue county pays a little higher until they find out through themselves.
Oh, yeah.
Because they have to be pretty, pretty good scrutiny before they let anybody in. It's what, thirty-two members total? And they drop a few, they probably get fifty one in and up to a three of men, based on that.
But anyway, I think I would concur with Rick as far as if he's willing to do it, I'd let you.
He says there's something physically wrong with me if I wanna go sit through that.
No, I think it's mentally. I'm gonna look back on the shoe if you wanna sit through something like that.
Well, the best part was he says, "You know, I don't wanna say this, but I kind of enjoy when they're, the numbers are going around." I'm like, "Seriously? Uh, well, you don't have to worry about me fighting for next year. I'm glad they give up the seat up in the."
You know, we got about the same thing with this regional board. We started out, we're gonna have the chairman do that every year and then pass it around. Once our chairman got there, he found out it was so complicated, he stayed on. So I think that's probably a good move too.
I mean, it'll save our county money.
Is this mandated? Somebody has to, does it have to be a board supervisor member?
No, it doesn't have to be a board supervisor.
It just have to be one?
They had an auditor, a couple auditors.
So there's order of some clerks?
One city clerk's are doing it? One member from?
Chris could do it if she'd want to. I don't know if she'd want to.
I would rather you go with a department head.
Yeah, but some counties did have their.
But if you're willing to do it, that's even better.
Some counties in it, so they have different.
So this, we would be looking at it from a county perspective, so it has to be a county officer.
Yep.
But it could be just one.
Right.
And it could continue to be the same one till they want someone to switch over. Like Bruce went to game, but such a short amount of time that you're there, you never really, you barely get up to speed and then,
Then you're done.
They even pass it off to somebody else.
You vote on new board members, but you don't even have a clue and like, you've been there your second year, so you have, at least you had knowledge of some of the names, but it's like,
You know what? I don't think it'd be good if we leave the chairman and leave the same person there, but rotate to everybody else. Everybody's aware. Let them sit in the back row. Someday they might have to be that slot.
Well, I think.
Some year Rick might not be there and somebody's gonna have to step up there. We just won't have everybody walk. It doesn't cost any more to send two guys down than one.
Well, you don't necessarily always have to send two though.
Right.
Uh, and so, so what's the length of being on at this board actually? What's the length of term?
It's a board. Well.
They meet.
They meet.
The advisory board.
Once a year. The advisory board meets four times a year, which I don't wanna be on.
They are.
Okay, you don't have to be then. It won't make you be on that.
That's when you sit real low in your seat, so you know.
Crawl under the table.
You don't, you don't cough and get your attention.
No, no.
You don't stick your hand up to scratch your head.
Most people were from the Des Moines natural area, the Clives. There was a couple. I think the one guy came from, with, uh, over on the east side, but he'd been on the board, serving another.
And Marge, she's from Spencer.
So essentially, you need one person to go.
We need one person to go once a year.
One person to go once a year.
Yeah, and then Chris Friend goes.
Well, usually Chris and I will both go. I had a, a board meeting with the ISAT group, that's why I did go this year.
Cause I thought you went last year.
Yeah.
And why does, why does Chris go?
The reason Chris and I both go is because Chris applies the insurance for, to the employees.
Right.
I like to go because it gives me good information on what our rates are gonna be and I need those for budgets.
Right.
So usually her and I will both go just the one day. We don't go for the board meeting usually because that involves whoever our, our person is, our representative.
Board representative.
Makes the decisions in the board meeting. But the educational sessions and to learn what our rates are gonna be is very helpful.
That's practical.
I think it is. I'm very, I think it's very important that.
That's practical, but, and I understand and appreciate Peggy's, it was thrown up in this discussion that, you know, Chris is a department head.
Right.
But she has the most hands-on dealings with that.
Yep.
And I, I'm not gonna, practically, it seems like she would be the person to go to this every year. But I understand.
And she does.
And she does, but for the informational, but she probably understands it way better than Rick or Bruce. Cause having been there, you probably do. Isn't that fair to send that person versus somebody that's rotating or?
Rick is on the board, so Rick would be the voting member for the decisions that are made.
He can't make the other person a board member?
Why would you want to?
Well, because they have the better information. They understand all this way better than.
I think Rick has a perfect, I mean, I think he has a grasp of all of what's going on.
Yeah, I'm not saying that you don't. Don't get me wrong.
We don't have to work on it. Everybody, one person's shoulders.
No, but.
If you look in his book, Humble County, everybody's got a number. Yeah, Humble County's the very first one they ever entered in this.
Yeah, we're in the first nine.
We're zero.
Yeah.
And so what program? I think we need to keep representation down there just as is, but maybe it's same person every year, like Chris and, and.
I understand what you're going for, the informational part of it, which is good, but she's the one that deals with it.
I don't see the need for another board member to go down.
No, not another.
Supervisor to go down.
So how do you say, I mean, normally, is it just the chairman? You're, you're one year again.
No, I just do, I would do it like you just, like Carl's, like I serve on the landfill. It's just one board that you just stay on.
If you'd be willing to do that, that would be fine.
I'll do it.
Cause it's a once-a-year deal?
Yeah.
And then you can come back and you, repetition, obviously, sometimes it does sink in. And it's a rough, it's a rough one.
You see down the road, you're not gonna run some year, then you get somebody goes out in the background.
If you're willing to do it, I mean, that's fine. And I agree that two people don't need to go. And the reason you drug Bruce, and it was a tight, pretty tough driving to do, but.
Well, cause, you know.
It's good to know, but if.
There's cost to send a person down.
Hopefully, when you visit with the, the gal, I take it, that one day.
Well, she'll be up here.
She'll be here to, to present to us.
Hope the one-day meeting will go over too. So I would, you know, I don't know if we gotta make a decision, but if you're willing to do it, you'd be a good candidate to stay on the board.
Next year when we do the appointments, we'll just remember that that's Rick's favorite.
And thank you for doing that.
I wanna say it's my favorite.
Oh, come on.
I just, I just think, I think it's just foolish to.
I agree, but if, well, thank you for doing it so that you have that background and a little bit better grasp of it. And if you're willing to stay on it, that'd be awesome.
The only good thing about it, as far as I saw, and God knows I needed the food, but they had awesome food.
Well, they did.
They're always trying to tempt you and lure you in.
Yeah, it was very good. Taking you outside, you do learn a bit from talking to people down there though.
You do.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
So that was all my, that was a good discussion.
Okay, Carl. On Tuesday night, I also attended the conference board meeting at Fairs.
Okay.
And Thursday, I was down with Peggy at the ISAT board meeting in Des Moines. Peggy did a great job running that show and basically, we just went mainly on our budget stuff, approved the budget for next year and heard reports from the different members of the ISAT staff. We learned who the recipient should be for the scholarships this year from ones that are selected. And that's under the hat until they're announced. Uh, I would put a flag out for our county people. Anybody that's an employee of the county, you've got kids in high school, they ought to apply for these scholarships. It's big money. And we have a hard time getting that word out. Anybody's eligible. Whether they drive a main tater, whether they work in the office, or whether they're sheriff deputy or whatever. When those applications come out, we need to be able to PR that a little bit, I think. Uh, budget, reports them all, and we talked about all these upcoming conventions, conferences and so forth. Capital Day, we're signed up for in the March conference. The one that we're gonna have next fall instead of November will be in August at the event center. And they're gonna make that more casual, dress a business dress and so forth. They're kinda, since it's outside, and in the summertime, they'll be having some of the events outside you. So when you go next August, you can dress casually. You don't have to worry about being inside.
To me, I thought they were kinda mirroring that over NICO.
Right, they do the same thing in NICO.
Which would be nice.
I think it'd be alright. And, uh, you keep checking that website. You get all kinds of information off the county website, what we're talking about right now. One of the things that budget, and we just wanna talk about this a lot, they raised the county dues a hundred bucks a year. Our na, alright, county dues. We get our money back many times over on that, I believe. And one of the conferences is gonna raise twenty bucks. And it's gonna be up at, Wells Fargo up at the event center, but because of that, you can't run back at noon and buy your lunch someplace else. So lunch is gonna be included, so it's a wash. So they're thinking about that. For salary adjustments for all the employees, two percent average up and down the line. The owner refused to take any money, additional salary. Uh, as far as the budget goes for next year, it looks like it's pretty much gonna be pretty close to. Uh, for the budget goes for next year, it looks like it's pretty much gonna be pretty close to coming out. I think that's, Peggy probably gets one.
You were at the Farm Bureau Monday morning.
The Farm Bureau Monday night, that's right. Anything else you can add to the meeting, Peggy?
No, he's having all of it pretty good.
She does a good job up there.
Thank you.
Uh, I was at the Farm Bureau Monday night, the rest of them, very interesting. The assessors and conference board on Tuesday, worked over the budget, and Friday, was up there and canvassed the votes for this group.
Pretty much most of them the same, uh, Monday evening, Farm Bureau board supper. Uh, on Tuesday evening, the assessor, comp board, courthouse, jury room. Wednesday, I was over near Bradgate, and physically looked at an aggrange well located on Young Drive and property, that was very interesting. And then on Friday, yes, we did canvass the election here in courthouse, that's all I had to ask.
Okay, I had the LEC meeting on Monday.
Oh, sorry, we were talking about, that was already from my, that was from my week's minutes.
Yeah, alright.
I was there too.
And I had the Farm Bureau on Monday night, county conference, assessors conference board on Tuesday night, and then, uh, Thursday and Friday, I was down in Des Moines for the ICAP meeting. And I think if anyone would wanna go along for that, it'd be good for them, but I don't think it'd be mandatory that we send to.
I agree.
Just to save a little money.
I agree, you want to share.
I know where Bruce likes to go, there's a, uh, Texas Roadhouse right next door where you meet.
You know what, they were closed.
They were closed.
Yeah, but the next morning, the next day they were open, on Thursday they were closed at noon, I don't know why.
I asked Rick, he says he did over there, and I says, "Well, I have never ate over there, but it's a nice hotel."
Yeah, it was, is there anything else we need to, uh, discuss for things, Peggy?
Um, the board meeting for next week, uh, for the.
Oh, for the President's Day.
Yes.
Courthouse won't be open.
Right.
Next week, um, on the twentieth, 'cause of President's Day.
We did claim today.
We don't have claims, um, I don't know if we have much on the agenda.
We're just steering around that date because of being President's Day, is there any need to have a meeting at?
We don't have anything on the agenda yet, it's open.
I'm moving this as Spencer's, the twentieth meeting because of President's Day.
I'll second that.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Probably on the twenty-seventh, this.
Twenty-seventh's a big day.
Could be a big day, we got all those.
It's a birthday.
Yeah, it's birthday.
Yeah.
On your birthday? We did a special for you then. I'm glad you volunteered, we'll put you on the list.
Yours too?
Oh, my goodness, I love that.
Mike can bring a meal.
We're gonna have open mic day, we'll sing to you. We'll have open mic day, and you can sing to us then.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Did I have the vote on that, did I? Can't remember now.
Yep.
Yeah, we did the vote, okay. Uh, is there anything else for us today, Peggy? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The first?
Second.
Second, all in favor?